Okay, pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Laws of 1975, this meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on May 15, 2018, and has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of May 18, 2018. All municipal requirements of posting notices have been met on May 15, 2018. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, before moving on, Mr. Toscano, any late additions to the agenda?
No, Mr. President. The resolution reflects what the board discussed in the exact session.
Okay. With respect to approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting on June 11, does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to accept the minutes?
Motion, second.
Okay, roll. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Ms. Van Kauwer?
Yes.
Ms. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Communications? Any communications come into the board's offices that we need to be aware of?
Communications are on file in Board's Executive.
All right. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Messinger. So, we're going to move into a presentation Mr. Boyce has for us in a moment, but I just want to go through a few items. First and foremost is to report the final class statistics summary for the class of 2018. So, we graduated 2,760 students this past year. Seventeen of those students graduated under what's known as the portfolio appeals process. 985 of those students graduated under the substitute competency test process, so had a certain cut score in the SAT, ACT, things of that nature, under the current graduation requirements. 112 of those students received state-endorsed high school diplomas as a result of their IEP through other pathways. We had 11 students that did not graduate with their class, but seven of those 11 are slated to graduate in August. The total number, bless you, the total number of students denied graduation in 12th grade solely because of their failure to pass an, of course, assessment was zero. Ninety-three percent of the class of 2008 is going on to two-year, four-year technical schools or trade schools. We have 17 students that are attending Ivy League schools, 41 acceptances to Ivy League schools this past year. Forty-one. Thirty-two students that are going on to the armed services in some capacity. And the class of 2018 earned $91 million in scholarship money for the Freehold Regional High School District. So, that's the, that was this year's class, excellent class. Few odds and ends before I turn it over to Mr. Boyce. One, reporting out on our HIB, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Self-Report Self-Assessment. This is an annual process. Schools are asked, using specific criteria, to evaluate themselves on different scales. The highest score that a building can receive is a 78. And pleased to report that all six of our high schools were in the exceed expectations bracket with scores from 76 to 78. So, all on the high end across the board in terms of the HIB self-assessment, which is, you have to be able to prove through documentation, the interventions, the programs, the items that you have in place across the district to make sure that it's a bullying-free climate. Summer programs are off to a fabulous start. We've got a lot of veteran staff that have been here for several years now, involved in our extended school year program, our Title I program at Freehold Township, our regional credit and credit recovery programs. And we started our AP Summer Bridge program just this morning, actually, and I'm pleased to announce that there are 217 students that are taking part in that program, which is, you know, a phenomenal opportunity to get a leg up on taking some more demanding courses here at the Freehold Regional High School District. Buildings are all fully staffed for the most part. You know, we've had a couple unexpected departures, whether that's from maternity, or relocation, or taking other jobs, moving up the administrative ranks. But we're moving forward on filling a few open positions at this point in time. But overall, we're ready to roll for September if it happened today. Also pleased to announce that we've reached agreement across the board with our different municipalities about S3 officers to ensure that we have either S3 and/or SROs in all six of the high schools come September. So, I'm happy to report that. And this past year, we had close to 5,800 AP and IB exams across the district. And to give you perspective, in 2011, we had a student population of about 11,500, and we had 2,200 exams that year. We had about 10,500 students this year, and we had almost 6,000 exams. And we still had 70% of those students scoring a three or above on those exams. So, the students can do it if you provide them the opportunities and the supports. And I think that we're proving that in a phenomenal way here in the regional. This past weekend, Mrs. Howell, Mary Huff, Renee Schneider, and Leanne Reckonwald were all invited to present at the AP Annual Conference about our use of data in the district. And there were about 250 people in that session. So, certainly doing things well across the board and getting some national recognition for it. And then we'll turn it over to Mr. Boyce momentarily. But, so, the final budget agreement has been struck. It's a potentially devastating impact to the Freehold Regional High School District. For those of you who followed in the news, Shaun will go through the odds and ends. But suffice to say that the School Funding Reform Act was never fully funded. And what happened as a result of that over the past eight years or so is that it ultimately created a series of winners and losers. If you had a declining population, you were a winner. If you had an increasing population, you were a quote-unquote loser in terms of aid matching the students you had. But it's never quite that simple. And with the governor's budget this year, Freehold Regional High School District is losing almost $1.3 million in a budget that's already done, which is problematic, to say the least. And the seven-year path that we're on is absolutely devastating to this school district. And Shaun's going to go through it in terrific detail. But the point that I have to open with is that we are one of the most financially efficient school districts in the state of New Jersey. We are low spend, high performance. We spend $2,500 under the state average. We spend under the Monmouth County average. We spend less than almost all of our K8s to educate our children in this district. And when you look at a budget picture, seven years out, that has our budget, $15 million less seven years from now than it is today, that will destroy this school system. And we are going to take the steps to make sure that that's not going to happen. So, I'm going to, Shaun and I got together, and this is, you know, Mr. Boyce's work, and, you know, we wanted to make sure that we took the time to explain to the board how we landed where we are, what that funding looks like, and some of the inconsistencies that we see with certainly the funding issues, but also some of the concerns that we have and some of the next steps that we'll be moving toward in this school system. So, Shaun, I'll turn it over to you.
So, as Mr. Sampson said, the School Funding Reform Act, or SFRA, is currently funded, not the first funding formula, and most likely it won't be the last funding formula. And it is surprisingly straightforward, conceptual, what it's setting out to do. Let's take a look at a very high level of what it looks like. What happened just prior to 2008 is the state pulled together researchers, folks who had experience in the industry, to determine first, what does a student need to meet the thorough, efficient education standard? That list was then quantified, okay? And from that emerged a cost model. A cost model that is applied to all school districts, the same cost model. The each individual school district student profile, the demographic profile, is what the cost model is applied to. So, what you have is, and you made for the term adequacy budget, that cost model applied to the kids that we currently have. And those characteristics are part of the cost model. So, special ed, kids versus regular ed kids versus kids with limited English proficiency. At risk, students all have that, those characteristics considered in the models of the costs that's initially used. So, when applied to the demographic profile for each individual district, you get a distinct, unique adequacy budget. That's the amount of money that needs to be raised. Right, so, first step is quantify the student's needs and then determine how to fund them. It's the determine how to fund it piece that has been inconsistent over the years in a variety of ways. The way this, the SFRA works is that the local fair share comes first. So, a community's ability to pay for its own education are the first dollars in to get up to adequacy. And then the state picks up the difference from what the community cannot afford, okay? So, with the overall objective that every district has the amount of money necessary to provide a thorough, efficient education, that's the overall objective. The local fair share, a community's ability to pay, now, it's going to be difficult to come up with a method to quantify a community's ability to pay in any type of formula scenario. And we recognize that. The state uses two wealth indicators to make that determination. Let's take a look at those. So, it uses equalized property value, which is synonymous with your fair market value, as an indicator of your ability to pay, and also district income from the most recent state-of-new-Jersey tax returns. It then converts those, or translates those numbers into actual dollars that represent the local fair share, which is our property tax left. The multipliers are dictated by the state. I'll talk about them in just a moment. But equalized property value, which, assuming that everybody, what the state, what the funding formula does is assume that everybody lives relatively within their, therefore, it can live in a home of a certain value. That is an indicator of your ability to pay taxes. Same thing with the district, with the income from the members of the district. Now, there have been some concerns raised on each of these two. For example, the property value does not include pilot arrangements, which are payments and little taxes. So, there are some valid property values that have been excluded from that. And to the extent that a community can exclude property values, it suppresses sort of the view of their ability to pay, as you would imagine. So, that's not something that our communities heavily involved in. In some other cities around the state, we do have that. The income is also just personal and not business income, corporate income, which raises some concerns too. But not to get too far in the weeds of that, structurally, here's how it works, okay? So, the issue that has happened over time is that the multipliers that convert those wealth indicators into a community's ability to pay have changed, okay? And they are not clearly defined by the state each year. I'll give you an example. This year, the number is .013828828. And eight comes the same one. It's some number that has no specific definition, nor is it consistent from year to year. And that's a cause of concern for a lot of school districts that are looking at this to say, you know, it's, the funding formula should be consistent, predictable, it should be formulaic, it should not vary over time. So, if you look at the first graph, you can see the changes in the multipliers would increase on the property side of close to 50%, and on the income side, much less. Let me give you an example of what that would look like if we bring this down to a micro level. Let's say you're a homeowner, and your home is worth $300,000, and your household income is $100,000. The first year of the SFRA, which is in 2009, fiscal year 2009, that homeowner would be calculated as being able to pay $3,664 in property costs, okay? Ten years later, fiscal year 2019, same homeowner, same value of their property of $300,000, and same household income of $100,000. This funding formula, using the current multipliers, now says that that family can afford $4,384. That's a 20% increase in your ability to pay without any increase in your property value or your income number. So, that doesn't make sense. There's no, if anything, the cost of things rise, CPI goes up. If anything, you would be able to pay a little bit less in tax. But even that aside, you would expect it to be consistent. And you can see that property, the property side is really what's driving that variation. And those communities that are heavy in property wealth are disproportionately impacted by the change in variables. So, that's really the issue that we have focused in on while we're talking to our legislators about the funding formula and how it's being applied, and the concerns that we have with predictability of funding, and really the measure of our community's ability to pay. So, the Freehold Regional's local fair share, over time, is reflected above. It started out in 2009, that first year of the SFRA, at about $100 million. And now it's reflected at about $150 million. If the same variables had been used the entire time, same multipliers, those are synonymous words. If the multipliers remained constant for those 10 years, that's the purple line, $127 million there. Now, why does this matter? It matters because, remember, local dollars first, and then state aid fills the gap up to adequacy. Okay, with me? All right. So, the state's, the SFRA's current position on our community's ability to pay for its education is that our local fair share is $153 million. Our tax levy is $134 million. So, according to the funding formula, Freehold Regional's property taxes are to look by $20 million. What they're proposing is a shift in funding from state aid to property taxes. Now, this has not been an issue in each of the last eight years or so, when Chris Christie, for the most part was, for most of Chris Christie's time in office. Because during that time, what the governor did was say, you know what, we're not running the formula the same as last. Because the same as last was the same as last for things last year. So, the second chart here is, the green line is what the aid that we actually receive, where the red line is what the SFRA calculated as aid that we should receive, okay? So, the green is what actually happened. The red is what was supposed to happen according to the funding formula. The difference between the aid we received and the aid we were supposed to receive, that gap, that's called adjustment aid. All right, so that's where it comes from. Now, there has been adjustment aid each and every year, so-called adjustment aid. But like I said, it hasn't been a fight to funding because we've gotten the same aid as the year before. Now, looking back down at the bottom of the basic progression here, just as a reminder, the things that could move your adequacy budget would be changes in your student demographics, right? So, as your enrollment goes up, then your adequacy budget would go up. As your enrollment goes down, your adequacy budget would go down, right? Because it's a per-student allocation based on a uniform requirement. So, our enrollment has ticked down a percent, percent and a half a year for the last several years. So, we would expect to see our adequacy budget drop some. And therefore, if we were to assume our local fair share remains consistent, state aid would tick down. Our position is not that, you know, we should receive a certain amount of aid consistent with what we should receive in the past, not necessarily. We want a funding formula that's fair, that considers all of the variables and treats all districts equally. Okay. So, now, let's move forward. Before we do that, everybody clear on where we are at this point and how we have evolved to that? Good?
Yes.
Okay, move forward, adjustment aid phased out. So, for the last several months, the state, major players in the state, the governors, Senate presidents, have been having the conversation about, there are districts out there that are overfunded, and there are districts that are underfunded. When you, when the state did same as last year, same as last year for several years in a row, those districts whose enrollment was going up and up and up, their adequacy budget was going up, and their state aid was not increasing with it. Those are the underfunded districts. And it's true, there are districts that have had significant growth in enrollment and have not seen any additional aid to accommodate that. So, the, what has come of the agreement, the final agreement in the budget, is a seven-year phase-out of adjustment in percentages. This is what it looks like for the first year, the year that we're just beginning right now. It's a 5% reduction of the adjustment aid amount, that $25 million, for $1,267,927. And there is a resolution on the agenda tonight to address that. And then each year, those, more and more of that adjustment aid gets taken away, okay? So, just in overall scale, we have a $200 million budget. 50 million of it is state aid, 25 million of that is adjustment aid. So, it's a significant portion of aid, of funding for our student budget. So, as I mentioned earlier, the state's proposal is that, you know, the shift go from state aid to property tax. Because according to the state's calculation, Freehold Regional is undertaxed, overrated and undertaxed. Independent of the SFRA, a law that's coming into effect at a different time, once the SFRA was already in place, was the 2% cap on the tax. All right, so, this limits a district's ability to increase taxes beyond 2% a year. There are some exceptions, and you can take less than that and bank that cap and use it in a future year. The long and short of it is, there's limitations on the amount that you can increase your property taxes. At 2% a year, for the years covered by this phase-out, property tax increases cannot keep pace with the reductions in state aid over that time. In fact, if you look at property taxes and state aid in fiscal year '25, at 2% increase per year, that budget will be $8.4 million less than the budget that this board adopted in April, okay? So, then that's seven years.
Seven years.
So, it does have a very significant impact. So, along with our concerns that we have voiced about the multipliers used to calculate a community's ability to pay, its local fair share, we've also raised some issues about Freehold Regional being somewhat unique. And in certain ways, the formula doesn't capture the, doesn't quantify our district in a way that's consistent with K-12 districts. This is just some information regarding our spending. So, the cost model that I talked about, as you would expect, a high school kid is more expensive than a middle school kid, that's more expensive than an elementary school. So, you would expect that a all-high-school district would be in a position where it would be spending more than K-12 districts, or K-8 districts, or anything other than high school districts. The red line, by the way, across is Freehold Regional. And those are just some other points of comparison. So, we have a track record of extremely efficient spending in terms of quality of our programs. Those who have children in the district have a better feel for that. We feel that you take any high school student in the state and compare them to a high school student that lives at Freehold Regional, the opportunity that the Freehold Regional student has stacks up or exceeds. I think it would be hard pressed to find another part of this state where a student has equal to or more opportunity. County programs, county votes, everybody has access to them, so that's a wash. But what the students at Freehold Regional have available to them in terms of opportunity is something that's going to be impacted as we phase out of adjustment aid, right? So, before I hand it back to Mr. Sampson, just to recap, the SFRA, the funding formula, which is actually small, actually very well designed and is pretty straightforward. What does the community have to do with education? What does that cost? And then, how are you going to pay for it? Community first, state picks up the difference. One other note, that the funding formula for the SFRA accounts for the lion's share of funding. There are some additional categorical pieces to it because there are things that don't fit into a formula. For example, transportation, right? It's driven largely by geography. So, if you have a very densely populated area, it's a whole lot different amount to transport those kids than in a very rural area where there's 10 miles between homes. So, a situation like that doesn't reflect a district's decisions, so it doesn't adapt to a formula, so it's pulled out. You know, a portion, a significant portion of special ed costs are pulled out. Securities costs are pulled out. So, there are certain things that are not considered within that formula. But I'd say 75% to 80% of the costs of the district is captured within adequacy. So, it is a fairly comprehensive formula, it's fairly straightforward. We have concerns on the fidelity to the intent and spirit of the law and the predictability of funding through ever-changing multipliers which drive up the local fair share while at the same time subtracts state share. And that's very well made according to what's happening there.
So, that's definitely happening, right? And the difficulty, you know, I referred to the multipliers in an article in NJ Spotlight as the secret sauce. We never see those formulas. We don't know how exactly it's determined. What we do know here in Freehold Regional is that our property wealth has in no way kept pace with the state's determination of our ability to pay, period. You know, it's there, it's apparent. What we also know here is that... What we also know here is that as a high school-only district, we have some unique expectations. So for instance, we have highly specialized schools within schools for special needs students across this district. We resorted extraordinary aid by 2.2 million last year, correct, Mr. Boyce? 2.2 million, I think it was, right? Somewhere around there?
Yes.
Right. And extraordinary aid is what you receive for your most needy students who cost more to educate and are deservedly so, need that money. So we eat that money. As far as the county vocationals go, we are a high school-only district, so 100% of our population has the ability to technically attend the county voc. So when you look at the Monmouth County Vocational System's funding source, and I want to be clear, I'm by no means saying deny any of those opportunities to any children, what I'm saying is look at the funding of how those schools are funded, because Freehold Regional High School District pays 5.2 million for the five high-end academies in the county vocs. That's 5.2 million every year. We have bus runs that we have to pay for out to Mass that cost almost $9,000 a student. We have no relief there, right? When you take it a step further and look at what we spend per pupil across the state, we're spending under $14,000 per pupil. That's, that's $2,500 less than the county average for high school districts in this area, so, you know, apples to apples. It's less than every single one of our K, all of our K8s except for two. So five of the seven K8s that send us actually spend more per pupil than we do as a high school-only district. That's the, the efficiency that we, we have here. So, you know, I've been clear with our state legislators, our local officials, that this will have a long-term devastating impact to this school system. And we're certainly not going to sit on our hands while that's going to happen. You know, we have a community of 200,000 in the Freehold Regional geographic imprint, and I have a funny feeling that most of those parents of school-aged children and folks who believe in quality public education for their children will rise up over this and, and make their voices heard. And, and I'm candidly, we're going to plan on leading that, that charge. So, certainly not going to sit here and watch this district be dismantled after we have done everything, every barometer, every financial metric that the state puts out there, we are in the top quartile across the board. Every single financial metric. When you look at high school regionals, there's 31 in the state. We're, we're in the top four to five in every single financial category. Most of those top one or two. You know, so you hear all the time, folks harp on regionalizing, shared services, consolidation. We have that here. That's what this district is. So we should be the financial model for the state, rather than actually, you know, being a, 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 a district that was, you know, caught really in a drive-by of other districts being made whole. So, we don't support any model that creates winners and losers, right? When you're talking about educating children across the state in New Jersey, so the underfunded districts that weren't receiving their, the appropriate state aid, they deserved, those children deserved to be funded too. The solution isn't to do the exact same thing that districts like ours to make that happen, you know? So, that's the, that's the irony of all this, and, and I'm candidly, I'm ecstatic that Freehold Borough received the, the boost in aid that they did. Those kids deserve it. That, that, that community deserves it. It makes zero sense to devastate the high school district that those kids attend to make that district whole. That's, that's what I'm trying to rectify in, 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 in how I look at how these things square up. So, we're asking our, our legislators to take a look at our financial metrics across the board, because the, the long-term reductions to the district will have a incredible impact on the opportunities of students in the Freehold Regional High School District. And, you know, Mr. Boyce has, you know, artfully developed our budgets over the past several years, you know, the threat of losing state aid has been there. You know, it's a threat, it was a, it was a potential every single year. And this is the second year in a row that the state has impacted school budgets after they've been struck. So after the budgets have been formally adopted, you're moving forward, you reach in after that budget is struck and alter it. That's an incredibly, I don't want to even say dangerous proposition, that's such an irresponsible path from our, our elected officials, right? And disappointing on so many fronts. So, we're going to be communicating with our community members over the course of this. We'll see what happens over the next couple of months with the path that folks are going to, are going to head down. As a, as a, as a parent of four school-aged children, to me, it's, it's absolutely abhorrent that we would fix a, a funding problem by creating a similar problem to what had already existed. That's not exactly rocket science. We have a referendum in October that's slated to go to public vote on October 2nd, and we've worked hard in putting that together over the past year. And what I want to make sure that our community understands, that that is in no means some referendum that was slapped together to make up for the loss of state aid. That's an ongoing project that has been in the works and is needed in the district across the board, and even more so at this point in time, given the, the reductions that we're, we're looking at. If we don't fund the education for our children, what, what, what are, what are we doing, right? Like, like, that's the, that's sort of the, the question that I, that I have. And for those who've been watching, we've been busy, you know? We've testified before the, the Ed Committee and the legislator, legislature. We've, we've written op-ed pieces in NJ Spotlight and places like that. You know, because while all of this was going on, our folks, our, our legislators were actually debating providing grants to private schools for science teachers, and whether or not only county vocs were going to be able to apply for $400 million in funding for CTE programs, career and technical ed programs, which we have eight of in this district. And so luckily, I think some saner voices prevailed there about where we're, where we're headed. But the, the disappointment that I think I feel from how this has played out and the ambiguity around the funding methodology itself is so dangerous and overly simplified that I think that folks are missing the larger picture here of what's actually happening, which is there's going to be a system that's created that causes exactly what we're trying to rectify. So, I'll turn it over if the board has any questions.
Well, for Sean, I just have one question. You may not know the answer, but with respect to the state budget overall, do you know, like, I guess the biggest percentage of that is school funding? Do you know what percentage of New Jersey's budget is school funding?
I suspect it's consistent with what it's been in the past few years, which is roughly a third. So a third of the state budget goes to schools, and that's a combination of direct aid to schools that we're talking about here, and also contributions to the state.
Okay.
So, Mr. Boyce, I know you're going to have a plan for all this to help us out with this cut. I was eating my breakfast this morning, almost threw up my Wheaties. I was reading the article about Tom's River Schools, and they're facing kind of the same thing we're facing, and I think it really hit home today, because they do mention the Freehold Regional in the article, that this is really serious. And until this morning, and I know you've been speaking to us about it as board members and Mr. Sampson has too, until this morning, I kind of thought it was going to be a one-year thing. This could be every year. And I said to a friend of mine, I said, like, the referendum is real important, because those extras will never be able to afford that without going to a referendum. You know, those kind of days are over. So I think the referendum is like real crucial for October 2nd, and I just thought this was like, not just a cut, but we're just not funding this area anymore. This is a real cut, this is a cut. And this is every next seven years?
And of increasing significance. And just a word about the referendum, we had conversations, several conversations about how the referendum came about, the local capital plan, and many of you will probably remember, seven or eight years ago at this point, that we, we were able to fund ESIP, an energy-based program, to, you know, 17 and a half million dollars. We've also funded through our capital reserves, a number of projects along the way. It was our intention to really exhaust all of those possibilities before putting a referendum forward, and that's actually what we did. So our referendum is, is part of a much longer view of it than has been ongoing for the further part of the decade. So it is, is very well thought out, and it's something that's according to plan as we've seen it come.
Kenny, is, Mr. Bruno, speaking of the article and the paper about Tom's River, like, a lot of it is focused on the property tax increases that they're going to have in Tom's River. I think one of the politicians threw out the numbers, 1,600, 1,300, 1,600. But we're in a different situation than them, in that, as Mr. Boyce explained, it's not like we can go out and raise taxes to cover it. So really, from a Freehold Regional perspective, if this cut turns out to be reality, everything's just going to come down to cuts. It's not like, not that we would want to, but the, the possibility of increasing taxes isn't even there, so we're even, like, we're different than Tom's River. You know, and like you said, it was, I noticed Tom's River, they've been getting a lot of articles, so I think at some point, it'll focus on the cuts that are happening and not tax increases.
So to Mr. Boyce's point about, look, this is, this is the issue that we've, we've harped on throughout the, 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 the sort of budget argument, right? Is that the, every, every community's situation is incredibly nuanced, and it's incredibly complex. And when you place a simple solution over a complex problem, you have all these offshoots of really problematic outcomes. And that's what's happened. You know, that's what happened in, in just maintaining state aid flat for all those years. That's what happened with the agreement here. And so every community's situation is different. Ours is incredibly unique, being a, a regional that serves eight different communities, so we're even more complex in terms of how it, how it, how it shakes out here in the Freehold Regional geographic footprint. We are, there is, there's a meeting in, in a week or so with a number of Monmouth and Ocean County School District leaders, we're getting together. You know, we're going to be very clear on what the impact, you know, is going to be to some of those school systems, again, understanding that each story is different. I think that you, you know, the state has to take, our leaders have to take a, a deeper look at all of this, rather than pandering to political factions across the state in terms of how they, they problem solve this. And I would hope that we hold them to a, to a higher standard of, of how they embrace taking a look at this over the next seven years, because we really need to get off the path that we're on.
Mr. Sampson, if I, if I could mention a few comments on this, I don't have any questions, but I've studied this quite a bit since you brought the topic up, and I've been in conversations with, with Mike, oh, maybe eight or so years. Anyway, I moved to Coltsneck from Westbury, Long Island for one reason, and that was 23 years ago, and it was for the school system. I don't think that anything can affect property values as much as the quality of the school system. And it paid off big time for me. My own son went probably to the best, to the most prestigious colleges after attending Monmouth County Schools. And the cost of the schools is in fact much less than what you would find on Long Island, and you have better quality also. One thing that you can't bring up, Mr. Sampson, but if I was you, I would, but I could say it, is I once sent Mr. Sampson a listing of what the superintendents make in Long Island, and they make double of what you do. I mean, they cut back, and they cut back, and they cut back here, and you look at the newspaper articles, which I also send you, and the Freehold, according to the newspaper articles, if you don't look into it carefully, the Freehold Regional High School teachers are handsomely paid, but what they don't tell you is the cost of living in this area is significantly higher. So we, we really cannot cut back. If we do it, we're cutting our own throats. This is a bad situation. It's not fair to the kids. And the PS to this story is, when my son did in fact graduate from high school, I paid out-of-pocket well in excess of $260,000 for his four years, because I value education so much. Now, I, I don't want to, you know, I do want to continue, but Heshy's going to kill me because, you know, I keep going on and on, but I'm a senior citizen at this point, so bear with me. There's three, three teachers, former teachers here volunteering, because they know of the value of education. That's why you guys are here, and you want to keep it a good district. This is something that's, that's very bad at this point, and I can assure you that Mike Messenger, our president, has some very good strategy to try to address it, but please, everyone, don't take this lightly. I know that these meetings are televised, and I don't know how many people watch it, but for the televised audience, please do everything you can to, to keep our districts at the level they are. And the other thing that people don't really bring, I was a former federal investigator, and my job was to find problems. So I have that in my DNA. I come into the, the district here and I look at everything. I was just telling Mr. Duniu how I drive around Coltsneck High School. Why? I don't know why, because I always will, I'm looking for problems. Did I find any problems? No. Today, I didn't find any problems, you see? So that's what, that's what I, I want to do, and this district really is second to none. We have to keep it at that, and it's unfair, the way the politicians now are saying, oh, let's cut back and let's let the property owners pay for more money. You know what? The health insurance has gone up so significantly. I recall when I went into private practice myself in 1991, I was paying 2,500 a year. Now it's up to, I think, 44,000 a year. That's a significant burden that the taxpayer has to pick up. We can't afford anymore to cut back. Did I say all this well, Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Good job.
Good, I didn't want to, you know. Thank you. But I had to get on my soapbox tonight, because I'm very passionate about this, and it's time. And usually, I say, cut the staff, do this, do that. Not at this point, no. So thank you, Sean.
And what, what we've really been talking about is the politicians and how this is a whole political process, since the politicians are the one in control. And what I will say is, with respect to strategy, Mr. Acetola, and what my immediate strategy is, is that my plans for Thursday night are to go to the Monmouth-
is, is that my plans for Thursday night are to go to the Monmouth County Fair and pay my admission fee. And the only reason I'm doing that is to go to the Democrats' table and the Republicans' table and really get in their faces about what's about to transpire in this district. Because the whole thing is a lobbying process. And, you know, every time I see the mayor of Marlborough or in the town council, I have to really unload on them on what is potentially going to happen to this district. Last week, I called up Sean Golden's office, tried to educate him on this. They did say they were getting a lot of calls. And, you know, we have three different legislative teams in our district. You know, one's Democrat, two are Republican. I think Democrats are going to have more sway, since they have total control, and we just have to keep working this political process. And as Mr. Sampson said, once the public gets engaged and finds out what's going to happen to this school district and the tangible things that are going to be taken away from them, and how it's going to negatively impact their children, you know, I think we will start to see political pressure being applied. And I just wanted to reference one other thing that Mr. Sampson said about regionalization, in that that's been thrown out there year after year about what the state of New Jersey needs. And it's been illustrated here that we are where the state of New Jersey wants to be. And that is one thing that Steve Sweeney, who's the, one of the big architects of this whole fiasco, he's always talking about regionalization, okay? So I think he needs to be educated about this. And then the other thing I'll say about with respect to the media, any newspaper that editorializes about property taxes in New Jersey, they always complain about there's too many school districts, there's too many towns. And again, Freehold Regional is where newspaper editorialists want to be, as it is where Steve Sweeney wants to be. So that's another thing we have to continue to talk about. So I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything on this issue. All right, then. Anything else in superintendent report?
Thank you, Sean.
All right, we're going to move on to the board reports. And Finance Committee, Mr. Moses.
Yeah, basically, almost the entire reading has been dealt with this group called Centenistic, which is an energy conservation company. Basically, we decided that we are going to hire them because they claim, and it's been proven in all their other clients, that they can save us close to $130,000 the first year on energy costs, and in a five-year savings of $1.3 million in energy costs. And if they don't do that, they write us a check for the difference. I mean, I've heard of a lot of claims before, and so we did some checking, and they have only had to write, like, I think it was three checks before to school districts where they didn't meet their quota of saving them the money. So we see this as an excellent opportunity to save money. We've already invested in, you know, our energy systems in the schools, and now we're getting people that are going to help us manage that and to save us even more money. So I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I think the vote was taken last meeting, and we decided on.
Yes, it's not on tonight's agenda. It's, we're pending attorney review of contracts, and Mr. Toscano and his team are having those conversations with that company now. And it will most likely be put forth in August. Okay?
Policy Committee.
So the Policy Committee met on Monday, July 16th, to discuss the nine new and amended policy on the agenda tonight for First Read. Policy 1550, Affirmative Action for Employment and Contract Practices, is an existing mandated policy that's being recommended to be renamed Equal Employment Anti-Discrimination to reflect changes in federal regulations. Additional changes included wording modification and the insertion of the statement that, quote, "The Board will encourage minority businesses, women's business enterprises, and labor surplus area firms to submit bids to be considered for the awarding of contracts," again, to reflect recent federal anti-discrimination law changes. The district has set clear processes in place to encourage these types of entities to compete for contracts, so the addition of these changes will not impact our operations in any way. Policy 2415.04, Title I District-Wide Parental Involvement, is also an existing mandated policy that's being recommended to be renamed Title I District-Wide Parent and Family Involvement to reflect changes to this federal policy and relates to our two Title I schools, Freehold Township and Freehold Borough. The recommended amendments include mainly minor language changes, but the substantive change to the policy is the inclusion of engagement of families of Title I Part A students and not just parents in how the funds set aside for parental and family engagement efforts are spent. This change also reflects recent federal code changes. Policy 2431, Athletic Competition, is an existing mandated policy that's being amended to reflect recent changes in New Jersey statute. Again, some minor wording changes, while the more substantive change includes the annual distribution of and compliance with Commissioner Vett fact sheets and sudden cardiac arrests and opioid use. The district has been providing these fact sheets and requiring acknowledgement of receipt and compliance for the past few years, and these forms are currently accessed and acknowledged through the parent portal with an electronic signature feature, so these changes will not impact our operations. Policy 2431.8, Varsity Letters, is a new mandated policy that requires school districts with grades nine to 12 to develop criteria for awarding varsity letters for school-sponsored interscholastic extracurricular activities. Those criteria will be developed by the superintendent or his designee. This new policy is in response to a 2017 legislative change intended to provide a clear process to awarding varsity letters to student athletes. This is particularly important in the district with multiple high schools such as ours, so varsity letters are uniform across, varsity letter awards are uniform across schools and may also have been adopted in anticipation of new sports competitions, particularly electronic sports competitions that may be coming down the pike. Policy 5350, Student Suicide Prevention, is an existing mandated policy that is being amended to reflect changes in the New Jersey Administrative Code. Again, many wording changes, but the significant change regards the mandate to immediately report online attempted or completed youth suicides to the New Jersey Department of Children and Families. Previously, the policy stated that incidents should be reported, not that they will be reported, despite the fact that we have always had the practice of immediately reporting any and all concerns of this nature. The revisions in the policy also include updated warning signs of suicide and the steps to be completed if a student is deemed at risk. Prior to the opening of school each year, all staff are educated on the warning signs of suicide and reporting requirements by our school physicians and the administration. Policy 5355.33, Pupil Smoking, is an existing mandated policy being renamed Student Smoking. It's being further amended to address the issue of smokeless tobacco products such as vapes and electronic smoking devices. There's also new language which outlines the prohibition by persons under 21 of certain things like the possession, sale, or use of prohibited smoking products and paraphernalia, and which provides for punishments for violations pursuant to the student code of conduct. Finally, the amendments dovetail with our policy 5530 on substance abuse in recognition of the use of electronic vaping devices with marijuana. Policy 5535, Passive Breath Alcohol Censored Device, is an existing policy adopted pursuant to a statute on reporting and examining students suspected to be under the influence of alcohol in school or at school-sponsored events. The policy permits the principal to determine to use a breathalyzer at any given event and stipulates that prior to the entry of any student, a random sequence testing procedure will be determined, such as testing every fifth student to enter the function. The principal may also determine to test every student according to the proposed new language. The policy also provides that written notice will be available at the point of sale if tickets are sold, or point of entrance if tickets are not sold to the event. This is not a new practice in the district, but this policy makes it clear that testing, if random, will be by a predetermined formula or imposed on all as stated in the student handbook regarding prom. The final two policies, 5561, Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion Techniques for Students with Disabilities, and 8462, Reporting Potentially Missing or Abused Children, are existing mandated policies being updated regarding reporting requirements. Policy 5561 refers to emergencies that may make it necessary to temporarily restrain or seclude a student with a disability. New state law requires updates to the policy regarding the new definitions and to propose, and the process, to be followed if restraint is necessary. And Policy 8462 recognizes that early detection of missing, abused, or neglected children is important to protecting the health and safety and welfare of the children. The district is an active voluntary reporter of potentially missing and abused children, and we always err on the side of caution by reporting. However, this policy clarifies the reporting procedures as previous regulations were unclear. That concludes policy.
Thank you, Ms. Frankhauser. As a matter of fact, based on that report, I have a question for the administration, actually. With respect to 2431.8 and Varsity Letters for Interscholastic Extracurricular Activities, if someone just goes through the minutes and reads that, you know, it basically implies that maybe we don't have a policy. So, Mr. Sampson, if you could explore, just tell, inform people that there already is a policy in place. So we have clear practices in the building. So in, it's funny, because I can remember them in the district where we've earned, where we've given a varsity letter for something that might be considered outside the normal scope of a competitive athletic team, and that was with a competitive dance team at Manalup in overtime, and a horseback rider from Freehold Township. So those are the two that we've awarded varsity letters to outside of the standard athletics. And the criteria is always that they've got to compete in a recognized league and/or organization against accredited, whatever it might be, right? They have to practice the same that a varsity sport would practice, so it can't be somebody who comes, it can't be a group that just gets together once or twice a week and does that. And then we weigh that on its merits and decide if that would be the equivalent of a varsity letter for athletic participation. There's been a number that have failed to meet that criteria across the six, six high schools over the, at least my tenure here. And it's, we haven't had, interestingly enough, I don't know if we've had a request for that other than the horseback riding at Freehold Township a few years back. Where I think this is going, and it's going to be very interesting, is getting out in front of the whole esports wave. I'm, I'm serious. That these, you know, the athletic associations of a couple states have adopted policies around esports. It's starting to trickle into South Jersey, and esports are where kids come around and compete in like a gaming situation. And I think that, I honestly think that this is just trying to get out in front of that wave. You know, our, our criteria is pretty easy and simplistic, but it's also very difficult to meet if you're not an athletic team. And so where that goes with sort of the new wave will be, we haven't had any of those requests, but I suspect that we're at the tip of a, a change where that's coming. Okay, moving on, public participation. Anyone in, from the public, like to speak? All right, then. Moving on to personnel and negotiations. Oh, we have G1 through G14 for your consideration, and Mr. Boyce has an addendum with respect to G3.
G3, Approval of Appointment, if board could add the name Mark Tumanaro as a science teacher at Freehold High School. Guide, Master Step Three, $69,800, effective 9/1/2018 through June 30th, 2019, or as soon as available, if you could add that to G3.
All right, so with respect to G1 through G14, does anyone want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution to accept these items?
Motion.
Anybody? All right. Roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes, and I abstain from G14. So I'm yes on everything except for G14.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Programmed Operations. We'll consider H1 through H11. Does anybody want to put forth a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, before we vote on this, I do want to say a few words about H10. So H10 is with respect to a mid-block crossing at Howell High School, and it pertains to a crosswalk between the school and, I believe, access to some other recreation fields, Middle School North. Thank you, Howell people. And so basically, I just wanted to point out that really, the origination of this came from someone from the public who had a concern, witnessed a concern, brought it to the board's attention. So I just want people to know, and the public, that when there are issues like this, that you feel the board needs to be addressed, that they will be considered. And certainly, if worthwhile, like this one was, you know, the board will do its best and the administration will do its best to see something like that to completion. So I just wanted to point out about that addition to the roadways around Howell High School. So, with that said, could we take a roll?
Can I have a quick question?
Sure, Ms. Lavin.
I've had this circled, and I'm glad you brought it up. So the whole financial responsibility is ours? Is that how it works?
Yeah, it's reimbursement for reasonable, reasonable costs estimated at $40,000.
They're also, correct me if I'm wrong, though, Mr. Boyce, I do believe that it's their architect and engineer that's doing it, right?
Their engineering.
Doing their work.
And house professional services.
So they're, they're covering that, Ms. Lavin.
Great.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right. Now, I'd like to consider, in totality, I1, I2, which is Building Transportation and Physical Plant, and also, as one vote, J1 through J4 on educational programs. So if we will do one ballot. Anybody want to put forth a motion?
J.
J4?
J.
J. Oh, someone's asking a question about J?
No, we're just getting a number.
J1 through J24?
I'm sorry, that's why I was, just wanted to make sure.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right. With respect to K1 through K3 administration items, in addition to approving professional conferences and workshops, here, we're also going to approve the first reading of the new and revised policies that Ms. Frankhauser had spoken about earlier. And we're also going to approve an ice hockey cooperative agreement between Madawan Regional and Freehold Regional. So does anyone want to put forth a motion to adopt K1 through three?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Is there any old business? With respect to the old business, what I want, what we want to put up for a motion here is to affirm the modified HIB
is to affirm the modified HIP findings from the parental appearance that this board heard on June 11th, 2018, at our meeting. Do I have someone who wants to put forth a motion to affirm those findings from our HIP meeting?
Motion.
Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes. Does anybody have anything to add, new business?
I have a question. Is there a reason why we don't take the budget, I mean, I think I put the, we agenda in one shot, and more than we're thinking about?
I only really do that if there's something, like, I want to pull out of it and have a little more discussion than other items. Like, for instance, on this one, I and J, there was a lot there, and I knew no one was going to comment on it, same thing with personnel, but that's basically what it comes down to. Just to give people more of a chance to weigh in, that's why I segregate it.
Okay, anything else on new business? All right, does anybody want to put forth a motion to adjourn this meeting? All those in favor?
I.
Okay, okay.